I connect resolution authorizing mayor do the new business terms to purchase lands to protect our water head.
Miller?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
That will go to old business.
Mayor, much of what I gave is old business, okay? The ordinance for the municipal tax to correct that.
Yep.
And then the resolution to accept the county auditor's assessments. And a resolution regarding the holiday lights.
Which one you want? You said you got some new business, right?
I have new business, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Start with the one for new business, uh, council records.
And that's actually going to be resolution sixteen eight four.
Is this one?
No. Those are the long ones.
This one?
Yes, that one is first.
Does anybody have any?
Yep, they should all have that.
Good.
Should be... I think that one's is... yeah, that one's first. The one with the little chart on it.
And that's the allocation of the local government funds. Yeah.
This is, this would be the resolution accepting the amounts and rates determined by the budget commission.
Do you need any at first or we at first?
Any at first.
I'll make a motion to accept to adopt a federal resolution sixteen dash eight dash forty six.
Mm-hmm.
A resolution accepting amounts and rates that determine by the budget commission and all the rest of the necessary tax levies and surrendering them to the county auditor.
Exactly what does that mean? You do it every year.
Yep, it's, we get it every year from the budget commission and it's basically their rate. Yep, this one is the rates, um... This one is the rates.
Show me.
Yes.
I get this one then. I get this one then. This is the one that the auditor requires and talks about the tax rates that are used and establishes fixed upon this rate, Dick, what it amounts to is what we think you will realize in the general fund. And so you're talking about an amount of money that you can't exceed but you can plan on. So it's anticipatory funding allocation. This isn't, you do this one in concert with the one that you just picked up, which is the, which is the local government funds. I took that one. I, that one, the auditor got that one right. And the local government funds talks about not, uh, just a little bit over thirty-nine thousand dollars for the allocation for the village, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
It's something that we're required to do periodically and on annual basis, actually.
That's what our father wrote, but I have to be honest, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, that's fair. They sent them to us, but that's exactly what it is. It's the form they want.
Give me a second. Can I show you again?
I'm rolling.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Miller?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
And the second one would be the one that actually has our rate on it. In this resolution. One of all the numbers and this. Yep. And this would be sixteen eight five.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution sixteen dash eight dash five, a resolution accepting two thousand seventeen hundred plan of distribution of the local government fund and local government revenue assistance funds as proposed by the obvious county budget commission.
One second. Miller?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
A lot of good.
Uh, not yet.
There. The municipal income tax amendment. Who wants to explain that?
I can't begin to explain it, but I, because it's thirty, it's over thirty-nine pages long.
Yeah, Mark printed it if you wanted.
What I will tell you is that it's identical to what we've already adopted and passed with two seventy. On page nineteen on the... On the fifteen, sixty line down, we remove the, we change the language to, we change the language from payment is received by to payment is to the, received to the taxing administrator. Yes, that's what we're, we're changing. And then on page thirty-nine, on line... With line sixteen, we delete the sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteenth lines so that it reads if a payment under this chapter made by electronic funds transferred, the payment shall be on the date of the timestamp assigned by the first electronic system receiving the payment. In other words, you receive it when the first transaction occurs, as opposed to the final transaction that would come into your, into your accounts because of the centralization. And these changes were required because of the actual state statute and, and there were also two other changes, and I apologize. On page nineteen, on the, on this, on the sixth line down, administrator not later than the last day of the month, as opposed to the fifteenth. Uh, so we change that the last month following the last day of each calendar year. And yes, I know it seems like much ado about nothing, but in order for us to comply with how revised code section seven eighteen point oh three, how revised code section seventeen point oh five, we've got to make those changes. And thank you for your patience. And I know that doesn't make it any clearer, but we had to change the language, we had to, when it's received and upon which day it is received.
And it's only for people to pay, what, what is it?
Yes. Mark told me it says the primary change appears to be that withholding quarterly and semi-monthly payments, but all the postmarked by the due date and not received by the due date is the major change.
So all this is doing us is keeping us in compliance.
With the state statute.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rule. Have three readings and declare an emergency.
Exactly. Why is that an emergency?
Because it's an ordinance. Instead of a resolution with...
And, and I believe that...
Is that a deadline or something?
Yeah, I think that's, I think seven thirty-eight oh five takes effect September one. And that way we're not running afoul of that, or trying to avoid running afoul of that. Yeah, seven eighteen oh five and seven eighteen point oh three are supposed to kick in September one.
Just curious, anytime something's in a hurry, my alarm bell goes off.
Well, I don't blame you. I wasn't like this tax changes either.
Miller?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
This actual ordinance will be sixteen dash eight dash one.
I'll make a motion to accept, adopt ordinance sixteen dash eight dash one, an ordinance to amend ordinance fifteen dash ten dash three, the municipal income tax ordinance and declare an emergency.
I don't know who does. Somebody.
Miller?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Now we have, let's see. Holiday light competition. You want to explain that?
Go ahead. I don't have my paperwork here. I forgot about it.
Let's, let's get her done.
All right, fine. I want to preface this by saying this is not the police department doing this. This is the village. However, I've apparently been named the spokesperson for this.
Take your hat off and it'll make him look like...
Yeah, I forgot I even had it on. Mayor and I were talking about a way to try to encourage community involvement, and I think I mentioned this to you after last Christmas season. They will be coming later on down the road, so that's just kind of a refresher. But the solicitor's office has put together a res, uh, an ordinance, rather, establishing a Village Waynesville holiday lights competition. Basically, um, in summary, I would ask that you do three readings of this. There's definitely not an emergency. But I would ask that council will consider establishing this holiday lights competition where sometime between December and December first of each year and December twenty-fifth, a, um, a three-person committee comprised of non-village residents, um, as appointed by the mayor, goes around the community to select a first, second, and third, first, second, third, and fourth place winners of a holiday lights competition. The first place winner shall be entitled to one month's free electric. Second, third, and fourth place winners shall be entitled to a credit on their village electric bill in the amount of fifty, twenty-five, and ten dollars respectively. Uh, the committee will tour the village sometime during the contest, select those four properties which exude the most holiday spirit, and by majority vote establish the winner in each succeeding place. Winners will then be announced at the January council meeting and as well as any, um, social media outlets such as, as an example, the Waynesville Police Department Facebook page or, or the village has a Facebook page, you know, something like that. Uh, so it will be also placed on social media. This, uh, the mayor has, actually doesn't have the revised version of this ordinance, but, um, the credit would be immediately following the competition. So in other words, it would cover the December usage. It would be credited in January. It would cover the December usage. Um, that way, um, you know, that way the village doesn't pick, you know, a down month, say March or something like that where everyone's utility bills are less and, and say, oh, we're going to give you this credit this month. We want to do it as quickly as possible after the competition in order to, you know, be fair to everybody. So if someone spends, you know, a thousand dollars on their electric, heaven help them, but if they decide to do that and happen to win the competition, then, uh, a lot of people in the community will enjoy seeing it and, uh, and they'll get a bonus for, you know, for doing that. The, um, the village is authorized to require removal or modification of lights or decorations where such lights or decorations interfere with pedestrians, public safety. I mean, can't string them across the roadway. You can't, um, probably shouldn't tie them into the neighbor's electric. That wouldn't be very good either. Uh, you know, common sense, obviously, would, would play a role with that kind of standpoint. But the one thing I wanted to, um, make very clear, we wanted to make very clear, is residential properties are eligible to participate. Commercial properties are not eligible for prizes, however, they're encouraged to participate. And the three-person committee, again, will be non-residents, um, that's appointed annually, so it'll be three different people every year, um, to be appointed to this committee. And, uh, we pick three so there wouldn't be a tie or anything like that. So, um, that is what, um, we would propose to council if you would, um, like to have the first reading of that or if you don't think it's a good idea. Uh, we checked with, um, our solicitor, obviously, on the ability to give out, not give out, but award a credit on someone's account for one month's use of electric only. It doesn't count water and sewer. Um, even if they decide to have a fountain or anything like that running water in the wintertime, that doesn't count. It's only the electric, um, portion of their utility bill. And, uh, spoke with the administrator and our utilities clerk, and, um, it's, it's very doable as far as from a financial standpoint. Mayor, did I cover everything?
I believe so.
Sufficiently.
Thank you.
Is there going to be more than one category?
No. No, it's, it's just first, second, third, and fourth, so whatever, uh, as far as, uh, it, we want to try to make it as simple as possible. I know in the past, I think when they did it, they had, you know, most lights, most, uh, I don't know, air inflated objects, you know, they had different categories. And I think when, once you start going down that road, it gets very, very convoluted and, and it just gets, uh, it's just easier to do it with straight one, two, three, and four.
I'd like to see council, I would be exempt too, from winning.
There is a line in there. Village employees, including elected officials, are, are examples. Yes, I'm sorry. I overlooked that line, but it is in there. We, we still...
I'm sorry.
You just don't want to back it up.
Oh, yeah.
We're still encouraging, we're, we're still encouraging council to participate, set a good example. You just won't be awarded from a financial standpoint, but the community would appreciate it.
Might have trouble getting this passed now. It's all an effort to try and bring the community together, do things in the community and award people for doing good things.
Well, this idea kind of spurred out of the Good Neighbor Award through the police department that we award quarterly, and that kind of got the wheels turning and, and so, you know, anything we can do to move the village forward in a positive direction. And we have so much negativity all the time. It'd be good to, you know, give some of that back and, and let people see that we're not all just hard-nosed and that kind of thing.
So do we need any red? Do a resolution?
Ordinance.
Or an ordinance?
First reading.
You see, this wasn't the...
No, that is not the, there was a revised version of that.
I gave the wrong version.
Yeah, I think you may have. I can go back and print off the corrected version, I think.
Mark sent you the final version.
I'll just have to put all my inflatables in motion.
I hate those, so much. I hate those things so much. I hate those blow-up inflatable things so much. Oh, my God.
Did you say Carter fall off last year?
No, I didn't, but you know, this house down here with the house five million on, oh, man, it drives me crazy. I just don't like them. Eighteen or nineteen, I mean, I just don't like them.
Here's the ordinance number and here's, here's what needs to be said on the first line.
There you go. You inquired.
Cat got your tongue or what?
Yes, you inquired.
I'd like to propose an ordinance sixteen dash eight dash two, an ordinance establishing the Village of Waynesville holiday lights competition. Is that all I need?
Your first reading.
I'll second.
First, first reading.
Yes, first reading. Miller?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
All right, any other new or old business or concerns or...
Yeah, I have something for you. Maybe Fred can shine a little light on this PCA that's on our light bill. My word. I've really been hearing it.
Well, we're hoping to remedy that for you. I don't think you're going to get the interview you have, but you're going to get the honors of addressing it eventually.
Me?
Being council. The way it works, um, and I'll just summarize it very briefly. The village hasn't had a rate increase in probably seven years. We look back, and I know there hasn't been one since I've been here. In the past, they used to have rates changed probably every two or three years. Maybe when he was on the board, you even remember making some changes. But there hasn't been one for seven years. We were the only community or one of two in the whole state when we, um, first put the PCA on. And what the PCA is very quickly is a power cost adjustment that as our expenses come in monthly and all the costs associated with our power, it has an average. It's a program that's built into the system to adjust our rates to compensate for our expense. As our contracts go up for purchasing power and all those variables that go in, that affects it. If you only have, which we have a flat rate, nine and three quarters, if you don't have that built in to adjust, you're going to be operating in a deficit many months. Now, if you go back and would look back at your record, you'd find when we first put it in, there was many months, there was parentheses around it. That meant it was a credit because how it's, it works is if, just like at the gas pumps, if the price of fuel goes down, you get a credit. And that's where the parentheses come in. If we would happen to get a landfall where they said your power is going to be substantially cheaper this month, you will see that in your PCA. It will go down. It hasn't happened. I've been telling council since I've been here when I was getting involved with the rates and the structures and everything. Our contracts were built in to escalate, just like cost of living and everything else. We're not getting power today for the same price we were six years ago. And so we're seeing that in the PCA. The way they always have suggested it that it works is that when your PCA starts growing dramatically, you need to do a cost analysis to evaluate your rate structure, to see if your rate needs to be adjusted. Uh, we have been trending this and watching this, and I contacted a consultant, uh, several months ago in order to do a rate study so that we can see what we should be charging for our cost of service and they're to do to get back with us. What I can anticipate, and I can't say for sure, but what I think is going to happen is they're going to come back and say, your nine and three-quarter rate needs to be ten and a half or eleven. And if we move it from nine and three-quarter to, to that number, the PCA will go to zero. It'll still be there so that as we go through time and the costs change based on cost of doing business, it will plug in and then, but for probably a very long time, it will be parentheses and a little bit and back to parentheses. But as we go down the road and our contracts get higher and more expensive, there will be, come another day where you will make that rate adjustment again. So I guess to answer your question, I'm hoping to report back to you fairly soon of what their findings are and their recommendation for you to consider and why. And they'll even come in and do a presentation based on that analysis. And then it will be up to council, because I don't make rate changes. We can only give you that information to make.
The way we've always operated before was we'd make a fair guesstimate of what we thought it should go up. You know, we'd, we'd have Ronnie, uh, you know, go through it and see, and that's what we went with. Where this way, uh, it's a little more...
Detailed.
Detailed and reasons why, instead of just a fair guess.
They'll factor in what the cost of our power is, what our contracts are saying, what the appreciation, uh, cost of living, all those factors that come into that, and they'll build that in, and that, that model. And then they'll come back and say, based on your information, we think your rate should be this. What I was saying, you're probably not going to be happy to hear it, yes, the PCA will probably go away, but that monthly amount, whether it's half PCA and half rate, is probably going to be the same amount because the bottom line is it's what it costs us for power and the margin that we're main, we're required to maintain. And you're familiar with that from your past history. We, by contract or by rule, we have to maintain a certain percentage of margin to operate. We don't, that's not an option. So, uh, I will say this, though, and I know nobody who lives in town wants to believe this, but I don't think there's a power company anywhere close by that provides power to their residents cheaper than we do. And I, uh, as much as a year ago I could guarantee that, I can't guarantee it today, but I trust that you'll find that we're still the cheapest power available.
It don't seem possible as much as it's went up over the years, but I, I, I know what you're saying.
Well, I think you told me one time, Dick, that you have a meter somewhere that has a different supplier, whether you have a house or somebody you know or something. I would, I would encourage council because you're the ones that's going to hear about as well. I hear about it all the time, like we do. People call and they ask, especially, uh, when they see that spike. But talk to somebody, say, ask them, and, and here's the best way to get a true rate. So many of those suppliers will say, your rate's this amount, but they have all these adders and rates, and then when it's all said and done, if you take your monthly amount and in your bill, it will say kilowatt used.
I always ask, how many kilowatts you use?
You divide that into that amount and that's your rate. That's just math one-on-one.
Yep.
You take out all the hidden numbers and everything. You just take your kilowatts, divide it into your monthly rate for somebody like that. And I think I've heard stories of even fourteen, fifteen cents a kilowatt where we're at nine and three quarter. Well, with the, um, PCA, if I was speculated, it's probably closer to ten and a quarter, you know, maybe up to...
I don't know.
I don't know, but, um, but I, I, we're all, we're all getting those questions, but that's what we're going to do. We'll be coming back to council sometime in the near future with a, with a information for you to consider, a recommendation.
When the PCA is just a few dollars, most people think, oh, well. But when it gets up to where some of...
I think ours was seventy-nine dollars this month.
But it's almost half. It's getting close to where some people are saying it's almost half of what their regular bill is.
Kind of hurt. I have people ask me, does everybody pay the same price for electricity in this town, like the schools, the industrial park?
We're all flat rated, but there are some demand meters, which means it's calculated differently. But I think we are everybody on the same rate. And that's another thing that's unique for Waynesville because that's almost unheard of. In most places, uh, commercial and industrial is usually a separate rate in some configuration, the residential. than residential, but we're, we're the same rating for everybody. We, we really provide bar and basement electric rates pricing, we really do. Because they have a flat rate and you can factor in the margin that's required, and that's it.
Well, if you figure, uh, how old, now, to ten years ago, the amount of electronics that a person has in their household is, I mean, it's almost crazy. When you go to bed at night, you look at every light that's on a router, on a TV, something's on all the time, where you used to didn't have that.
I noticed my freezer was running every time I went to the basement, take a shower, the freezer would be running, I'm like, man. So I got a chair and I sat there and reading a book, well, it didn't go off, didn't go off, the book's there, come back down an hour later, didn't go off, I said, that freezer's been running for three days, I wanna write loads and buy a new one, I thought. Seems like the new one runs a lot too.
You're supposed to have it, Nick.
But it does shut off, I mean, you know.
But the PCA, we will be coming back, but that, all that is, is that is to, is a power cost adjustment to maintain what power's costing us, but here's why, and, and just very quickly, I know everybody's just wanting to get out of here, but it's, it's important to kinda know this, when they were recommending it to me and they give me the scenarios, they said if you don't have the ability to recover your expense, if you would have a catastrophic situation happen, like say an ice storm in one of the areas where we couldn't get our power that we purchased it from, what happens is they go online and they buy our purchase from somewhere else. If you don't have a contract with those people, they can charge you whatever they want, like propane was a few years ago, that's what will happen with your, your electric rate. What would happen to the village is if we only had a, a flat rate for our customer and we got hit with a two or three hundred thousand, and it happened, there were some electric rates during that ice storm that went up over four hundred percent, one or two months of that would wipe out our electric fund totally and bankrupt the town. There was communities and power companies that actually got bankrupted during that time. Now, is it fair to say that the village residents and everybody, do they wanna feel like they're gonna carry that load? But here's the issue, if you don't have a way to recover that cost, you're not gonna have any power.
Right.
So it's not popular, but you have to spread that cost, you have to recover it. So what the power cost is, is just simply saying, it's what it's costing us and we're just recovering it, and we're doing it with everybody equally.
Some of the questions I've been asked, so, um, I appreciate it.
Jill, can you give everybody the amplifier?
Yes.
Because that most recent one had a fairly detailed explanation as to the power raise, which is what you get...
The book, is that what you mean?
Amplifier?
Yeah.
Um...
I read...
No, yeah.
We get the home one.
Amplifier.
Anything else?
Since it gets back to me.